I call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council on Monday, February 11th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we will have the role.
Alder Person Coronan.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
Excellent. Next we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no one running up to the microphone, we will move on to item five, approval of the minutes from the January 28th, 2019 Common Council meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, motions?
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Last chance for corrections to the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the January 28th, 2019 Common Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Minutes are approved. Next up, we have Mayor's business. I don't have anything for that. We will move on to item seven, announcements. Any announcements from the council? All right. Now we'll move on to the Administrator's report, which we don't have. We are flying along. We'll move on to item nine, the Engineer's report. Do we have an Engineer's report?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. I let Mr. Monpass head home tonight due to the weather, so I will give the Engineer's report. The Well Six Pump Station, we got the sanitary sewer permit this week, so once the contractor mobilizes, we'll start that aspect of construction for that project. After the cold everyone endured over the last few weeks, the contractor has started on the shelter over at Fireman's Park at the beach. The Silent Street dredging project is complete for the pond. There is minor restoration that will be done in the spring once weather permits. The PD to Woods Road, the plans are complete. ACOM's working on the specs right now. That project will be bid this spring with construction commencing late fall. The County Highway M is sitting where it's at currently regarding going north on Cross Country Road into City of Madison. Kramer is working on the bridge at the main intersection of PD and M. That's the controlling path right now for that project, so that's part of the winter phase that needed to be completed, and that'll go into full construction once weather breaks again, too. The traffic signals at M and Liberty, Thousand Oaks, we coordinated with the contractor today. I was in meetings all day, so I gotta look at those and see what information was passed between staff and the contractor today regarding start dates, et cetera. So that'll be an update at the next meeting. And the, one of the items on the agenda tonight, we'll get to the detail on there, but the East Side Interceptor request for proposals went out for the Design Services, but we'll get into more detail on that, as it's actually an agenda item regarding an agreement tonight. Otherwise, that is it, and I can answer any questions from the council.
Questions on the Engineer's report? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Next we'll move on to item 10, Committee Reports. Finance Committee, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $18,467,732.42.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Coronan. Alder Kemp?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just for the sake of discussion, a number of larger bills to pay for this meeting. The first being the tax settlement with the school district in the amount of $11,74,859.04. We also paid the Chamber for the fourth quarter room tax, which was $70,000. We had a payment for the Public Works Facility in the amount of $2,730,000. We also had the Madison Area Technical College tax settlement for $788,853.03.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing none? All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further. Thank you, sir.
Next we'll move on to 10B, Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. Alder Ricky?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-19-008, Accepting Department of Natural Resources Grant for $192,526 to help pay for improvements as part of the Fireman's Park upgrade.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second? Second. Anybody Alder Journey? Alder Ricky?
Last year, the city applied for a Department of Natural Resources grant to help pay for improvements to the Fireman's Park beach landscaping and trail connection from the park to County M. The grant was awarded in the amount of $192,526, which is 50 percent of the project, from the Department of Natural Resources Noel's Nelson Stewardship Program. By accepting the grant agreement, the city agrees to the obligations, terms, conditions, and restrictions of the grant agreement.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-008, Accepting Department of Natural Resources Grant for $192,526, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Anything further, Alder Ricky? Thank you. Next we will move on to 10C, Plan Commission. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. I'd like to move approval of Resolution Number R-19-009, approving a certified survey map to divide lot 219 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two parcels.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. The proposed CSM will split lot 219 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two lots and basically create a twin house. Plan Commission discussed this item at the February 4th. Plan Commission meeting voted six to zero to recommend approval with the following condition, a shared wall agreement shall be recorded with the Dane County Register of Deeds.
And was it your understanding that the shared wall agreement was a condition of the motion?
Yes.
And that was the understanding of the second as well? Thank you. You've heard the explanation? Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-009, approving a certified survey map to divide lot 219 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two parcels with the condition specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion passes. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. The next two items have the same condition. Just a heads up on that. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-19-001, approving a certified survey map to divide lot 221, whoops, I jumped, sorry, 220 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two parcels. The CSM will split, oops, sorry.
And that's with the same condition?
Same condition, yes.
Okay. Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Alder Gaskell?
It's basically the same as the last, it's just a different lot number. Again, creating a twin house. The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-010, approving a certified survey map to divide lot 220 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two parcels with the condition specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. Again, similar. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-19-001, approving a certified survey map to divide lot 221 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two parcels with the same condition.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Gaskell?
The certified survey map will split lot 221 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two lots, creating a twin house. Plan Commission discussed this item and voted six to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-011, approving a certified survey map to divide lot 221 of the Cathedral Point subdivision into two parcels with the condition specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. Mr. Sayer, is this just an update on the attainment company? No? Okay. Well, I will read it, and then Mr. Sayer can provide details. In December 2018, the Plan Commission approved a site plan for the attainment company to construct a 32,408 square foot warehouse building at 1158 Clarity Street with the condition that prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant entered into agreement with the city for future public improvements for Clarity Street. An existing temporary cul-de-sac is located on the property that will remain until Clarity Street is extended in the future, at which time the temporary cul-de-sac will be removed. The agreement will allow for the temporary cul-de-sac to continue to be used as a public turnaround and require the property owner to remove the cul-de-sac when Clarity Street is extended in the future. The attainment company and the city attorney have reviewed the agreement and have no concerns.
Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. So as Alder Gaskell explained, this is just an agreement between the city and the attainment company. Entainment Company purchased a lot on Clarity Street. Clarity Street was built a few years ago, and there's currently a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of the road. So the intent long-term is that for that road to be extended east ultimately into an eastern portion of Liberty Business Park. Until that occurs, there's this temporary cul-de-sac. And what this cul-de-sac does, it serves a purpose for the public to make U-turns, also allows us to make U-turns with our plow trucks and larger vehicles. In short, what this agreement is doing, the attainment company is agreeing that they will remove that cul-de-sac when that roadway is extended in the future. The roadway would be extended in the future by actually a different developer, so the attainment company owns their property. The developer extending to the east is a different developer. So this agreement's with the attainment company to basically remove that cul-de-sac, put in sidewalk, put in curb and gutter, when the day comes in the future that this road is extended. If for some reason they don't complete the work, we are requiring a letter of credit. We could draw on that letter of credit. We could also then specially assess the property as well, too. So we do have safeguards built in, and if for some reason this doesn't happen, that they've agreed that we could, you know, draw on that letter of credit or special assess. So it's a smart agreement for the city to have long-term. It just protects us that this work will get done.
Thank you for that explanation. So then, you're looking then for a motion to approve...
Correct. We need a motion to approve it, yes.
Thank you. Alder Gaskell?
I will make that motion. Just a minute, please. All right. I would like to make a motion to accept. What are we doing? Accept the public improvement agreement for the attainment company? Is that adequate?
Approve.
Accept, okay.
Second.
Second by, motion by Alder Gaskell, seconded by Alder Touche. I think we already have the explanation. Questions, comments on approving the agreement? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving a public improvements agreement for the attainment company as specified in our packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Plan Commission? Alder Gaskell?
No, thank you.
Next we'll move on to 10D, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10D1, I make an a motion to award contract for Project ID 2019-10 Run, the Verona Street Asphalt Rehabilitation Project.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
Four bids were received for this project. The low bidder was Raymond P. Cutell of Madison, Wisconsin, in the amount of $430,840. The estimate for this project with contingencies was for $483,274. The following bid items were provided a significant reduction as compared to the estimate. Traffic control, sawdust, saw cutting, and base aggregate dense road gravel. Raymond P. Cutell has provided previous year's rehabilitation projects for the City of Verona, with the most current being last year. Based on past work performance in the city and references checked, public works staff and has the opinion that Raymond P. Cutell can do the work very well for us.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Posey?
I just have one quick question. Have any, knowing that there's such a significant difference in what their bid was versus what our estimate was, is there, have they had any cost overruns that we, in the past, with the work they've done with us, or have their estimates been pretty much dead on?
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, this project is pretty controlled. It's basically the contingent, 10 percent contingency that we put in there. So, yeah, if that answers your question.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of awarding the contract for Project 2019-101 for the Verona Street Asphalt Rehabilitation Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next up, item 10D2, I make an a motion to award the contract for Project ID 2019-102, Bitimis Seal Coat Project.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey, I think. Alder Touche?
For this project, we received two bids. The low bid was from Farners Asphalt Sealers of Wanakee, Wisconsin, in the amount of $237,870. The estimate with contingencies was $220,880. The following bid items provided the majority of the cost increase as compared with the estimate. Payment markings, which included crosswalks and bike lanes, and chip seal. Farners has provided the service for the City of Verona most recently in 2018, based on past work performance for the city and reference checks. Public Works staff is of the opinion that Farners has the personnel, equipment, and financial assets necessary to complete this work.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? On the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor awarding the contract for Project 2019-102, Bitimis Seal Coat Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, item 10D3, I make an a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding for joint design and construction of MMSD Pumping Station Number 17, Force Main Relief Phase One, and City of Verona East Side Interceptor Replacement.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
This memorandum of understanding describes a cooperative joint effort by the Madison Metropolitan Sewer District and the City of Verona for the purpose of design and construction of the MMSD Pump Station Number 17, Force Main Relief Phase One, and the City of Verona East Side Interceptor Replacement, given the proximity of the proposed city and MMSD facilities within the anticipated construction corridor, overall cost savings for the taxpayers affected by both projects can be achieved by designing and constructing the project together. By combining the two projects, cost savings are anticipated through economies of scale and the elimination of duplicate efforts. The memorandum of understanding outlines the commitments and termination rights by each the MMSD and the city, such as the agreement outlines the following: city and MMSD cooperation, city of Verona as the lead, design consultant selection, cost allocation, design, easement acquisition, construction documents, and bidding. Future agenda items will be presented to award the design consultant selected and successful bidder for construction work. This is a similar agreement that the City of Verona has with the MMSD and, or City of Madison regards construction of County Highway M. In addition, we had a third-party attorney review this and confer that the memorandum of understanding shall be contingent upon final legal review.
Thank you. Questions, comments on the motion?
Mr. Jacobson would like to say something.
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion does not need to be contingent on final legal review. We got the final document back today at about 3:00. So the document that I have that I forwarded Ms. Clark today is the final copy. The document that was included in your packet was a draft as of Friday.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding for joint design and construction of MSD Pumping Station 17, Force Main Relief Phase One, and the City of Verona East Side Interceptor Replacement in its final form, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Next up, item 10D4, I make an a motion to release, for a release of temporary construction easement under document number 4297834, located at 2159 Range Trail.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche?
The release of the temporary construction easement is required to remove the easement located at 2159 Range Trail. Easement is no longer necessary and is ultimately a cleanup item discovered during the due diligence process for acquisition of property by the City of Verona for the Public Works Facility.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the release of the temporary construction easement under document number 4297834, located at 2159 Range Trail, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Touche?
That is all.
Thank you. I would like to ask, before we move on to item 11, old business, if we could bump up 12A, the new business discussion regarding using the Verona Public Library as a warming center? If we could just take care of that right now? Okay. I believe Alder Ricky was gonna start us off on the discussion?
So, the main questions that came up at the library board meeting last week were, if the city wants to provide a warming shelter, is the library the best location? So that's like the overarching question. And then there are follow-up questions to that. So do we wanna start with the first question?
Yeah.
And talk about if there are other location options?
I understand the library director's here. Did she wanna make a brief?
That's fine, if you want her to.
Yeah, if you wanna come up and introduce yourself and maybe give an overview of how it went and...
Sure. Hi, I'm Stacy, excuse me, I'm Stacy Burkhard, the library director. So as Alder Person Ricky was saying, that we were discussing, in light of the unprecedented polar vortex temperatures that we had just a few weeks ago, the idea was brought about. The library normally tries to stay open as long as we can adequately and safely staff it, you know, under various inclement weather conditions. We do close from time to time, you know, even as possibility of tomorrow with the blizzard coming. So, I guess we just wanted to, it came up during the library board discussion, that maybe this was a discussion for the city more broadly, and whether it was the library that should be a warming center. It's obviously a good choice in the sense of, it's a large building, we have comfortable seating, there's plenty to do entertainment-wise with books, movies, games, and also computer access. So those are the positives. And then, on the other side, it is whether we can adequately and safely get our staff to and from the building. So there were some concerns from library staff during, about us being open when it was 50 below, the wind chill.
Well, thank you for bringing that to the council. And with that, we'll open it up to discussion from Alders. Does it, Alder Kemp?
So, I guess the question I have is, if you're using it as a warming center, were you open past regular hours or no?
No, we were only open our normal hours. In fact, we actually closed early.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to be clear on that. Has anyone in your committee spoken with Bernie about this at all yet, or no?
No, not yet.
Okay.
That's probably a good follow-up. Alder Cole?
I guess I was wondering if, as far as an alternative to the library, 'cause I understand the sending staff to buildings like that when it's that cold or snowy, what about an area where are, like, there's essential service needs anyways, like the, like the fire department or something like that, and there's that big conference room in there? I don't, that was just something I was thinking about on the same day when I knew we had library staff having to come in because we said we were gonna stay open for that. I was thinking, well, there's gotta be other areas where we have essential staff that have to be there regardless, and I didn't know if that was like an alternative there, or like here where there's police here. That was another thought I had.
I guess since Chief Givers is in the audience, would you be willing to answer a question? I'm wondering if having the public in the fire department, would that potentially interfere with operations?
It potentially could.
Since we're being recorded.
You know, while our station is staffed 24 hours a day, we do leave on emergency calls, and the station is not staffed during that time. So there would be a concern with people in there unsupervised in the fire station having access to the entire building, so that would be a concern. Something we can certainly discuss at this point in time. I don't think it's, I'm ready to make a decision on it by any stretch of the imagination, but there would be some difficulties, certainly. I think maybe city staff should sit down and think about all of the facilities and what would be their best course of action.
That makes sense. Alder Kemp?
If I could ask, I'm sorry, Stacy, how many people used it over that period of time when it was available?
Yeah, the Wednesday that it was so cold, we were open from 9:00 AM till 5:00 PM, and we had 200 visitors, which is low for a normal good weather day, but that was not an insignificant amount of people.
Thank you. Alder Gaskell?
In light of our public facility buildings, it seems to make the most sense that it'd be the library for the reasons that Stacy listed off. I think part of it is that we sort of made this decision last minute, and if we can, if we agree that the library's gonna be the place, then we can watch the weather and be in contact so that Stacy can determine which staff might live closer rather than a farther drive. It's just a matter of better planning, I think. And I think...
No, go ahead. Alder Ricky and then Alder Posey?
And then, can we also consider potentially if, if the library would otherwise be closed at the discretion of the director, could other staff members from the city, such as police or fire department staff, staff the library as the location potentially for safety?
Alder Posey?
I have another question for you, Stacy. With those 200 visitors for the day, were they people who were just there visiting, or could you not really tell if they were folks who might actually be in need of a warming center? 'Cause, I mean, there's a difference of getting kids who are stuck in house out of the house versus a place of need.
Right. We, for privacy reasons, we don't ever ask anyone why they're in the building. And there were a lot of power outages due to the cold, so we don't, I don't have any anecdotal or solid evidence why anyone was in the building that day. But there were definitely kids running around, blow off steam.
Alder Cole and Alder Gaskell?
Is it possible to partner with, like, area churches or anything like that? 'Cause I know, like, in Madison, a lot of churches were acting as, like, warming shelters. I know, but I don't know if that was, if they were working with Madison City Council, if they just did that on their own.
Alder Gaskell?
My concern with having our fire or police staff being involved with a warming shelter is that this is a time when it's critical that we have fully-staffed police department and fully-staffed fire for, to deal with emergencies such as, I'm sure you dealt with plenty. So I think we need to not involve them to just literally be in a building to keep it open. So, I think we need to not involve them to just literally be in a building to keep it open. And I agree with Stacy, we can't really determine whether or not someone's using the space for a warming reason or not. We just have to provide a space.
Alder Cronin?
Would it be possible to just use that small room that's just off the entrance? So that we would have a space where people can come and be warm, but the rest of the library could be closed?
Yes, we can close off the sliding glass doors and block off the main part of the library and just have the community room and the restrooms available. That's a possibility as well. And then that would really cut down on the number of staff who would need to be in the building.
Thank you. I'm going to add myself and just say, I think this speaks to the need that we need to have some really good emergency planning. I think this was a pretty unprecedented event and maybe it won't occur again. But I feel like I've been talking about unprecedented weather events an awful lot lately. And so, I think we, this, this speaks to a need for the city as us to have better emergency planning and to have a set of protocols we work with. And so, then everyone knows what we're going to do and we can, we can do the best for, for our residents and we'll also be fair to staff. So, I, I think, we're not, we're not taking any action, of course, because it wasn't noticed on the agenda. But I think I'll definitely be talking to staff and seeing what kind of plans we can come up with. And it'll definitely involve the, the library, emergency services and other, other department heads. Anyone have any closing comments? Alder Ricky and then Alder Touche?
I just wanted to clarify that, that it'll just be a staff discussion and then the staff together, the directors would write up some sort of policy together?
I guess that would depend on where, where the discussions led and whether, if it was a change significant enough that needed to come back to the council. Alder Touche?
Is there a reason we're not considering the senior center?
What, what Mary had said was that they felt like they didn't want to stay open in, in bad weather because they were worried that people would come out and that, and that they weren't entirely sure the parking lot wouldn't necessarily be iced over, it wouldn't be necessarily dangerous. They felt just with the senior population, it might be better to, to be closed. But that's something we can definitely bring up as well with staff-wide discussions. Last chance for discussion. All right. Thank you both. With that, we are back on to 11 Old Business. We're going to talk 11A, discussion and possible action regarding an agreement for assessor services with Associated Appraisal Consultants, Inc. Mr. Kleinmeyer?
Yes, so I, I think since the last time that this item was on the agenda at your meeting, there have been proposals, or I should say, we received a proposed agreement from Associated Appraisals. And I worked with Mr. McCorskey to provide some feedback. There have been some changes that Associated Appraisal has agreed to. There is, I would say, one item that is kind of still, well, that, that Associated has stuck to and that I guess it's a pretty important term. And I think it would probably be best, and my recommendation would be to have that discussion in closed session. There is definitely the possibility that the council would reconvene in open session on this matter and, and take action, depending on what the discussion is in closed session.
Thank you. Unless anyone has any comments, a motion to move into closed session on this topic would be in order? Alder Cole?
Make a motion to move in a closed session regarding agreement for assessor services with Associated Appraisal Consultants Incorporated. The common council may convene in a closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85, per N1, per NE, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in an open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second? Second by Alder Kemp. This is, of course, a roll call vote. If the clerk would be so kind as to read the roll. Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskill?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Now, with that, we will move into closed session on this topic.
All right, I think, I think we're back on. Alder Ricky.
Thank you. I move to approve the agreement for assessor services with Associated Appraisal Consultants Incorporated, subject to final review by the city attorney and finance director.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Any discussion on the assessor agreement? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Next, we are up on to, excuse me, 11B, discussion and possible action regarding, the discussion of any permissible action regarding the fire chief's performance and evaluation. Would someone like to make a motion to move into closed session? Mr. Yeah, Mr. Kleimeyer, before you leave, can we, would it be advisable to combine items B and C, to move into closed session?
Yeah, I mean, I would still have separate votes, but you could definitely go into closed session for one, and then go into closed session at the same time for the other one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, so a motion to convene in closed session would be in order?
I guess I'll read these two.
Okay, Alder Cole.
Right, I'm making a motion to move into closed session for discussion of possible action regarding fire chief performance and evaluation. The common counsel may convene in a closed session for discussion and permissible action regarding fire chief performance and evaluation as authorized by section 19.85, part N1, part N C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. In section 19.85, part N1, part N E, for deliberation of or negotiation for purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conduct of other specific public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the common counsel may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in a closed session.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. This requires a roll call vote.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And Alder Cole, were you going to read for 10C as well?
Yes. I'm making a motion to move in a closed session for discussion of any permissible action regarding city administrator performance and agreement. The common counsel may convene in a closed session for discussion and permissible action regarding city administrator performance and evaluation in city administrator contract as authorized by section 19.85, part N1, part N C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. And section 19.85, part N1, part N E, for the deliberation of or negotiation for public, sorry, my computer went out, purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conduct of other specific public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the common counsel may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in a closed session.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. This, of course, requires a roll call vote.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
All right, we are in closed session.
And that was at what time?
Oh.
Eight fifty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need a thumbs up from Andy or are we good?
We're on.
We're on. All right, it's Sheldon from the... All right, so I'm just going to go through and give people a chance to comment, even if they have no comments. So, does anyone have any comments on the fire chiefs' performance and evaluation? I just want to say we continued with the evaluation process and the council made no decision. In regards to item 11C, discussion of any permissible action regarding the city administrator's performance in agreement, the council made no decisions regarding that. And then I'm going to move on to item 11D, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the city administrator's agreement. Alder Gaskell.
Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion to accept the voluntary resignation agreement waiver and release between the City of Verona and Jeffrey McCorskey.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Anything to add, Alder Gaskell? Does anyone have any other comments they'd like to make? Alda Touche.
I just, on behalf of the council and the city, I just want to thank Mr. McCorskey for his service for the city and his time spent here. I wish him the best and we'll be hiring.
Thank you for those comments. I just want to echo them and I wish Mr. McCorskey the best. And I do have a press release on the topic as well, which I'll be sending out tomorrow morning. Any further discussion or comment on this topic? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the voluntary resignation agreement with the city administrator, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next up, we will move on to 12B under new business, since we already addressed 12A earlier. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operator licenses. Motion by Alda Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses in our packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item 13 is adjournment. Motion by Alda Touche. Second by Alda Riki. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned. Thank you.